Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Revere City Council chambers. I'd like to welcome you all to the special informational meeting on our mitigation package that was signed by the mayor last week. And at this time, I'd like everybody to rise and please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Reardon.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number one, the Revere City Council will convene to conduct a basic overview of the host community agreement between the City of Revere and Suffolk Downs and Caesars Entertainment.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, again, welcome. What's going to happen tonight is to realize that this is not a regular council meeting. It's an informational meeting, it's not a public hearing. Again, it's an informational meeting for people to understand what's going on. It's for the public's knowledge that we're doing this. Members of the City Council have seen the package, they have copies, and we have discussed it. But we want the folks in the City of Revere to know what's going on. And we have put together the mitigation team along with the mayor and Suffolk Downs and Caesars group. So what's going to happen is the mayor will come up and begin it once I give, you know, the word after we make a few more mentions. But I want the folks that are in the audience that have any questions, we'll do a little bit of presentation first. The questions will be in writing, there's a couple pads of paper on the podium with some pens. Ask your que-- write your question down, put your name and address on it for the record. Hand the question to the city clerk sitting in front of me. And your question will be answered after all the presentation is completed. Are there any questions from, at this time, regarding the process? Okay. So at this time, I think I will call on Mayor Rizzo to start the ball rolling. And please hold all your questions until after the presentation is completed. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to discuss in greater detail the host community agreement that the City of Revere signed last week with Suffolk Downs and Caesars. This is a major milestone as we move forward now toward a referendum vote where the people, the people of our community will actually have the final say as to whether or not a casino becomes a reality at Suffolk Downs or not. But this was the first piece of the puzzle, the first milestone that had to be met, was to get a mitigation, a host community agreement signed, and I'm very, very happy and pleased that we did. Before I go into some of the key elements of the agreement, I just really want to introduce to you once again, for those of you who maybe weren't able to make the meeting on Saturday or who have not had the chance to meet the entire team that we had working with us on this development agreement, I'd like to just point out some of the people that are here with us. From the law firm of Miracle O'Connell, we have Nick Anastasopoulos, Brian Fark, we have, as you all know, our Chairman of Economic Development, John Festa, our Director of Finance, Giorgio Anzoni, our City Planner, Frank Stringi, City Solicitor, Paul Capizzi, who was involved, and from CDM Smith, actually, as a, one of our consultants, one of our major consultants in the project, Bob Button and John Dougherty. Needless to say, we spent an awful lot of time, an awful lot of thought in putting this agreement together. I think, as we all know, for those of us that, you know, have either been in business or been around business, it doesn't work if it's a win-lose, it's got to be win-win. And so the legislature, in their wisdom, taxed this project at a 25% level. Some people may say that they left money on the table, I think quite the opposite. I think it's one of the best bills that's come out in this entire country when it comes to gaming because it allows the facility to actually make money and spend money where they should, on jobs, goods and services, and local economies and the like. So, you know, it was very, very important to me and this administration that we struck a deal that was obviously fair to the City of Revere but not bankrupt them before they opened their doors, and I think we've been able to accomplish that. I'd also like to thank the City Council. I know this has not been an easy walk for you guys because since the legislation was passed back in November of 2011, I'm sure you're no different than I am, people must be asking you all the time, what's going on with the casino, what's going on with the casino, what's going on with the casino? I started to bore myself with answers over time because it did take quite a while, and your patience was very, very helpful in allowing us to get to this point. So I would like to thank you, Mr. President, and the entire council for your indulgence in that. So, some of the key elements. I guess first and foremost, this host community agreement, over the life of the agreement, is worth approximately $200 million, maybe more, over the life of the, as I say, over the life of the agreement. It will give our residents unprecedented opportunities for employment, 2,500 temporary jobs, construction jobs, and 4,000 permanent jobs at the completion of the project. Revere residents, and I'll touch on this a little bit later, but Revere residents will have preference in both these construction jobs and these permanent jobs as they come available. Under the agreement, Suffolk Downs will also spend $7.5 million a year, bringing that number up to over $100 million into our local economy on goods and services. What that's going to do, obviously, is that's going to help our local economy, our local businesses that provide any array of goods and services, whether it be transportation, food and beverage, cleaning services, whatever me, whatever services and goods that this city's local economy has to offer is all going to be in play with this facility. And what happens with those, what happens with those businesses? Well, with $7.5 million annually spent into the economy, you have to assume that more jobs will be created as a result of those opportunities. So it's not just the casino, not just the facility at Suffolk Downs that's going to become a major, a major employer, or the, the major employer in our community and major taxpayer, but it will also allow our local businesses to employ many more people as And at full scale, as I've already alluded to, it will provide this city the safety and security of a dedicated revenue stream of an estimated $15 million a year once fully operational. And the good side of that is that we have a base floor to look forward to in the future of a no less than, but there is no clause in there that says no more than. So as the casino goes, so goes the City of Revere. And so, and I'll touch on those numbers a little bit later on in the presentation. I did allude to the fact that when this, when this facility is up and running and at full operation, it will be Revere's largest employer, it will be Revere's largest taxpayer. In fact, so much so that it will be in and of itself the largest taxpayer over and above the top 10 current taxpayers in the City of Revere combined. So that's what kind of an impact that we have and what kind of opportunity we have with this facility. I know that as a City Councilor up here for many years myself, we talked about opportunities on how we're going to bring new commercial growth to the city. How are we going to help to offset rising residential property taxes? And I would say that this is one great giant step in that direction to take that load off the backs of our residential taxpayers. So now, I'd like to go to the public input process, which many of you were part of, and I'm, again, on behalf of the entire mitigation team, I want to thank all of you for your participation. It was extremely helpful and it really helped the process along. And I'd like to thank the hundreds of people that came out to become part of that process and talk about what they'd like to see for the future of Revere if and when this casino becomes a reality in our city. Their input was extremely helpful as we put together pages and pages of information about projects and, and increase in services that people would like to see across the city. And it really helped us create a roadmap that we'll all collectively work on should this project go forward. So I think it, it was extremely helpful, and I want to thank everybody that participated in that. We also provided a mechanism for people who could not make those meetings to participate online. So we gave them, you know, a link that they could, you know, offer up their, whether it be questions or their recommendations for what they'd like to see in terms of mitigation. And I think this is, I think this process actually made us unique of any other community, including the City of Boston, the City of Everett. When we went out to conduct these meetings, we made it clear, and people, and people were very, very responsive and receptive, we made it very clear that these meetings weren't going to be debating a casino project because we could have done that for weeks and months on end. We made it clear that, look, this is in the event the casino comes to fruition, what are some of the benefits that you want to see as a result of this casino? And people, as I say, were great, and it allowed us to put together a terrific roadmap that's going to benefit this city, I believe, for decades to come. We also held meetings with other community stakeholders, the Chamber of Commerce, the Beachmont Improvement Committee, the Beautification Committee, and on and on and on, all, all kinds of different organizations and groups across the city that have a vested interest in our future. And so we made sure that we reached out to them so that they could give us input on what they'd like to see as a result of this agreement. We also worked with various consultants, as I say, CDM Smith, along with some peer reviews with the City of Boston to make sure that we had touched on all different aspects of the projects and all different impacts that the project could possibly bring. The next thing I'd like to touch on is transportation. Obviously, there's going to be significant transportation improvements and people, you know, I think, you know, people's natural concern has been, what about traffic? What about traffic? And I hear that, and, you know, I'm not discounting it, I mean, but every project that is presented to the City Council, I think it's a natural concern for people is, you know, what kind of traffic is this going to create? And I would argue, and I, and I would actually say to you in advance of just talking, just touching on a few of the traffic improvements that we're going to see, I believe that at the end of this, with the improvements that are being proposed, and again, it's going to be hard, I think, for the average person to wrap their head around, but I think at the end of the day, when this, when all of these improvements are put in place, traffic as it exists today will actually get better as a result of these improvements. Okay? Because as we've talked about, traffic going to this facility, traffic going to a casino is not rush hour traffic in either direction. Those are not their peak hours. They could, they dribble in and dribble out over time, and they come from all different directions. They say right off the bat that 70% of the traffic is going to come from the south through the Ted Williams Tunnel or through the Sumner and Callahan Tunnels. So we, you know, that's 70% of it. These improvements, I would argue, are going to help our people who travel both in and out of Boston or whoever have the reason to use Route 16 or otherwise, it's going to help an awful lot. The first, the first project, and Frank Stringi is here, has his Bob Button to talk, and I know councilors will have questions afterwards, and they can address some of your questions pertaining to specifics of these, you know, each individual project. But I think the, the, the main focal point of this transportation plan has been the Boardman Street flyover. And that's going to eliminate an awful lot of traffic going both north and south on Lee Burbank Highway. Also improvements to Route 1 and Route 16 that's going to allow traffic now to go from Lee Burbank Highway directly onto Route 16, up onto Route 1, bypassing Bell Circle, Brown Circle, and Copeland Circle. So people that just want to get up to Route 1 will now have that opportunity to detour off and not have to travel through the entire City of Revere. There's also other local roadway improvements being planned for North Shore Road and Tommasello, spending about $1 million down there. We're going to have about $1.3 million to complete improvements at Mahoney Circle, Brown Circle, and at Route 60 and Revere Street. 200,000, in excess, actually, not less than $200,000 of, has been committed to Beachmont Streetscape improvements. And there's also $150,000 that's been put aside for a Route 1A study that, that, you know, we believe makes good sense. So, all that being said, I guess I'll just close on the transportation part by saying that we have done everything we possibly can to make sure that traffic is not just mitigated but traffic is made better for the residents of our community. I want to touch on the financial terms of the agreement. Shortly after the signing, God willing, if the referendum goes through the way we hope it does, and the applications are in, the applications, as all of you may know, are due in no later than December 31st of 2013. The Gaming Commission has said somewhere between February and April, they will be deciding on who is going to get the license in our region, or in various regions across the state. Should Suffolk Downs be the awardee of that license, we will get an automatic $4 million payment. That $4 million payment, the first one, will come on July 15th of 2014. The next payment of $4 million will come in on May 1st of 2016. Now, there's one caveat to that. Suffolk Downs has said, and now with the ability to open up the casino in what they're calling phasing, in other words, opening up the casino while the hotel is still being built, so they can put people to work and actually start generating revenue, they're saying somewhere around September of 2015 is when they are planning on opening. If their projections stand correct, we're not only going to get the $4 million that was negotiated, but we're also going to get the first annual minimum payment of $4.25 million, which will bring that fiscal year's payment to $8.25 million. So we have a bare minimum that we can count on prior to them ever opening the door, and when they open the door, regardless of what they make, a minimum floor of another $4.25 million. Now, assuming they're up and running the following year and year two, that minimum payment goes to $4.75 million or 1.25% of their gross gaming revenues, whichever is greater. So if they have some crazy banner year that they, you know, generate, just for the sake of round numbers because that's what I, I'm better to deal with, let's say they did a billion dollars in year two, they magically reached their predictions in year two, instead of the $4.75 million, the city would get 1.25% or $12.5 million in that second year, depending upon, so, but the minimum, I guess the point is, the minimum is $4.75 million, the upside is unlimited. In year three, assuming they're still ramping up, our minimum payment again is $5 million, and the city's share is 1.25 of gross gaming revenues. Year four, minimum that the city can expect is 5.5 million, but our share goes up to 1.5%, where it stays for quite some time. So, again, using that number of a billion dollars, the city's share would be 15 million based on that 1.5%, but never any lower than 5.5 million. After, after year four, we get into year five, where the city has a base that will never go lower than $9 million a year, no matter how bad a year the casino may have. So I think, you know, we all know, like any business, the casino is no different than any other company. We fall in a hard economy, it's going to hit everybody. And, but to protect ourselves, we felt that to, to have a minimum in place that would meet our obligations that we would set for ourselves, whether it be through capital improvement projects or ongoing operational costs, that it would make sense to have a floor. So $9 million is going to be the floor, and again, the upside is going to be 1.5% of whatever those revenues are at the time. Now, if these projections are off, and they're off because they're doing extra well, and now let's say they hit $1.25 billion in gross gaming revenues, the city's share now goes to 1.75%. So that would be 1.75% from dollar one of gross gaming revenues. So, you know, I don't have the math in front of me here, but 1.75% of 1.25 billion is a pretty significant number. And this number becomes a little easier because when they hit 1.5 billion, assuming they get there over the life of this agreement, 15 years, if they hit 1.5 billion, the city's share is 2%, or $30 million. Now, I think it's important to remember that this agreement that we struck with Suffolk Downs is essentially for 28% of what I'll call a parking lot. Because of geography, the City of Revere is going to have no casino construction within its borders in the early stages. And that's not your fault, it's not my fault, it's just how the site is. The City of Revere only has 28% of the land. So we have to remember, when we were trying to strike this agreement, the City of Revere has no, you know, nothing to evaluate, we didn't have anything, you know, Boston has a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes, and if they were to take their tax rate and place that on a billion dollars of investment, you're looking at about $35 million. So whatever number you may hear or see about Boston, back out $35 million because, you know, we don't have that construction. Will we someday? Of course. I mean, at least I'd like to think we will. We've seen other casinos expand and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's their hope and it's my hope that over time, they start to develop on the Revere side, at which point we open up this agreement and we now start going into a pilot with them, similar to the City of Boston. If you look at the City of Everett, for example, the City of Everett, their maximum upside is 25 million, that's it. That's with, that's with the casino within their borders. We have no casino within our borders, 28% of the land, and if we hit $1.5 billion of gaming revenues, the city's going to get $30 million. You know, I, I think, I think that, you know, we have a real opportunity for some serious upside over time with this project. Moving on, I'd like to talk, as I touched on a little bit earlier, about job opportunities and local purchasing. We had agreed, and Suffolk Downs had agreed, that 10% of construction jobs, those temporary jobs while they're getting up and, and building the hotel and casino, will go to Revere residents. Upon completion, 10% of the permanent jobs will go to Revere residents. And again, these are best efforts, just like best efforts with any other city or town that struck this agreement. They can't guarantee because these jobs are all going to be different. It's going to be based on different levels of skills, different, different needs of the facility. So, you know, there's no way for any of these projects to say 100% they're going to be able to fulfill that. So it's always best efforts. I mean, even if we put a 50% number in there, a 70% number in there, it's best efforts. If we can't, if we can't give them 70% of the, of the jobs, you know, are we going to hold them in default? I mean, you know, I think we have to be realistic, and I think the other thing we have to look at too, is for 78 years, we have had a lot of goodwill between the City of Revere and Suffolk Downs. Probably everyone on the City Council knows somebody, knows a lot of people, in fact, that have worked at Suffolk Downs over the years, whether it be as their primary job, as a secondary job to help put their kids through school or buy that second home. They're going to be no different. They're the same facility except with much more potential for upside. So are they going to say, because we hit 10%, no, we're not going to hire, you're already at 10%, we're taking no one else from Revere? Of course not. There's going to be, there's going to be, you know, some upside there too. We just put this in there so we could say to 400 families that, you know, yes, we're going to be able to, with a certain amount, you know, that, that we'll be able to say, you know, I want to see at least 400 families go to work at that site. If we have 600 or 700 families, 600 or 700 individuals that want to go to work at Suffolk Downs, they're not going to slam the door on the last 200 or 300. They're going to absolutely work with us because that's what they want to do. They're as excited about putting people to work and helping our local economy as they are as making a profit for themselves. And I know that because I've worked with them for the last 18 months. This isn't an all-about-me project for them. They really are excited to be able to, what I'll call, transform our city, that will benefit our city for generations potentially. So, and the last piece I'll talk about that I also mentioned was the $7.5 million that they want to put into our local economy. $7.5 million, they, again, they'd put in 10 million if they find the right vendors. They're not saying we're just going to limit you at 7.5 million, but they're going to use their best efforts to hit that number and make sure that at a bare minimum, they're going to spend 7.5 million in our community through vendor fairs, they're going to have one dedicated, I'm kind of backtracking here, with respect to the jobs, they are going to employ somebody that just promotes openings at that facility to East Boston and Revere residents. So that's their commitment to hire East Boston and Revere people, which I think is significant. Community improvement projects. This, to me, in addition to the revenue that it, that is being provided, you know, we could pad our bank accounts, and that would be great. But really, one of the most exciting things for me as mayor of the city and hopefully for you as City Councilors that, that will join with me in Suffolk Downs and Caesars, is to, when we, when I talk about transforming our, our community, I talk about providing and building and investing in community projects that are going to benefit the quality of life for our residents for a long, long time. Some of the projects that I've already talked about, the $2 million to help pay for and complete the new Harry Delarussue Stadium for football, soccer players, lacrosse players. They're going to pay $1 million towards the initial cost of a new youth center. I have long, long advocated and hoped for a new youth center for the city. Anyone that's ever been down the youth center, I know Councillor Powers worked down the youth center for a number of years. I'm not sure that really by today's standards would even qualify as a youth center. Something we talk about after-school programs for kids, you know, people, you know, people wonder, why are kids hanging around? Well, what are we doing as a community to give them stuff to do? What are we doing as a community to give them a place to go? I think by building a first-class youth center and invest- I think by building a first-class youth center and investing in after-school programs, then we're doing our share to make sure that the youth of our community and the students of our community are being treated fairly. Other monies will be allocated to fire apparatus and firefighter personnel, police cameras and vehicles, new police officers. We're gonna undertake what we tried to, you know, for several years now, is the demolition of the old police station and garages so we can add much-needed downtown parking, investment in a new DPW facility that if, I'm sure all of us have been down there, and when it rains, Superintendent Goodwin has to cover all the computer equipment with plastic. Investment in parks and playgrounds, the continuation of our Broadway improvements that we've been trying to implement over the last couple of years. Investment into our public library. You know, for a lot of communities, the public library is the center of their town. People, there's a lot of different things for both children and adults that take place at public libraries. We don't have that ability because we've never been able to make the necessary investment into our library. This will allow us that opportunity. As I talked about, transportation improvements, renovations of city and public buildings, job training for people, beautification projects, and on and on and on. A lot of things that we can do. Our senior center, we have a new senior elder service director down there, Steve Fielding, who's doing a terrific job. But he says, I need more money to get things done down here. Better transportation for our seniors, more, more options for them to do at the senior center. But again, all that takes money, and this is gonna give us the necessary money to get those things done. Aside from the traffic mitigation and the $2 million for the football stadium and the $1 million for the youth center, all payments are treated to this city as just general revenues. So, as much as we've talked about these projects we wanna see happen, we're not pigeonholed into doing any one before the other. It's all gonna be amongst us having a conversation, laying out our priorities, talking to our constituents, talking to our department heads, and seeing what makes the most sense for this city. So I think this agreement gives us great flexibility in doing that. I wanna talk just a second about the modification provisions, things that would allow a re-opener, and there are very, very few, but I'd like to touch on them for your edification and that of the public. The city of Revere may reopen this host-community agreement discussion if a state or municipal agency requires changes to any of the transportation improvements that have been proposed. Also, we may reopen if Suffolk Downs expands the casino off the Suffolk Downs property or onto the Revere side of their existing property. Automatically, the agreement opens back up and we go back in again to talk about our share of property taxes, our pilot plans. Regulations of the gaming commission that may require additional terms that, you know, to be added to the host-community agreement. I think that probably goes without saying. And the last thing is that if the gaming commission does not make compliance with the host-community agreement, a binding condition of Suffolk Downs, of Suffolk Downs' license for a casino. And the reason we have that in the agreement is for security. If they violate any of the provisions of this host-community agreement, we can go to the gaming commission and put their license in jeopardy, which obviously is something that is not going to benefit them whatsoever. If we put their gaming license in jeopardy, there goes any revenues for, for the, you know, for them and ultimately for the city. So, those are the provisions in which the host-community agreement can be reopened. And the last thing that I'll talk about before opening up for questions is acting as a catalyst for future development. And I think John Fester may talk about that a little bit later, if any of you have questions for him, about future projects, but safe to say that our office has been entertaining, and I know many of you councilors have met with potential developers that are all basically sitting on the sidelines right now, just waiting to see what happens at Suffolk Downs. Regardless of what some of you may think of this agreement, okay? And I hope most of you, like, like myself and my team behind me feel, it's very, very positive and a very good agreement and a good deal for the city. But regardless what you think about this agreement, think about future investment, future growth opportunities around the city, and what this is gonna mean to a city like Revere with two and a half miles of oceanfront, a TOD project that's just basically kicking off the early stage of development down there that we had estimated ourselves back several years ago at $500 million, what that number can grow to. The investment opportunities and interest in this community is gonna be increased exponentially. And that to me, in addition to these community improvement projects and the revenue stream and security it's gonna provide the city, is one of the most exciting things for me. Because we've got, you know, similar to a mall that has an anchor tenant, we've got an anchor tenant sitting over at Suffolk Downs. And with that anchor tenant, a lot of people are gonna wanna be in to take advantage, not only the seven and a half million that's gonna be invested in local economy, in our, in our local economy, but they're gonna wanna be where many people are gonna be visiting and hopefully drawn to our community for, for, you know, our restaurants, shopping, whatever else that this city provides. It's, it's, it's going to be a real opportunity for everybody. So, with that, I just wanna thank you, first of all, for your indulgence. I know this took a little while, but, you know, I, you know, I felt, and we all felt, and I'm sure you all feel, that we owe it to our constituents to get this information out there. There'll be much more discussion on it, and we'll be available for much more discussion. The next hurdle, as I mentioned, Mr. President, is going to be a vote. We do not have a date yet for the vote. We've been going back and forth with October 29th and November 5th, but we're trying to work that out with the city of Boston, and as soon as I have additional details on which direction that we've agreed to go to, we'll come back to the city council and ask you to instruct the clerk to call for an election on, on the appropriate day. So, again, we feel this project will be extremely successful and lucrative and will be transformational for this city's benefit for really decades and decades to come. So thank you all very much for your indulgence. And now, Mr. President, feel free to open up to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I do, I just wanna recognize a few other key folks that have been working on this program for almost two years, and one is Representative Kathy Ann Reinstein. We thank her for...
Fifteen years.
How long?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years, okay. Yeah, I know. And of course, Chief Cafarelli from our police department, Chief Dougherty from our fire department, Superintendent Goodwin, our election commissioner, Secretary Diane Coleller.
Senator Petroselli.
Senator Petroselli just walked in. Thank you, sir. Welcome. And of course, I want to acknowledge Chip Tuttle, who was a key player on the Suffolk Downs side, and we thank him for his cooperation, and we get to your team for the cooperation, and Mr. Fields for his cooperation. And of course, several of our school committee folks are here, Stacy Rizzo and, where's Dawn? Donna Leaf? Donna, Donna Pruitt, okay, was here. So, with that, I know, I know there are a lot of questions, a lot more questions that we, we had from the other day. And what I'd like to do is, before we go to the audience, and I wanna remind the audience that we're taking paper questions, and there's a couple pads of paper up on the podium. If anybody has a question, bring it up to the city clerk and we will relay it and have it answered by one of the team members that are here tonight. And, but first, I'll open it up to our councilors. I would appreciate if the councilors try and keep their comments to a minimum. I would like to offer five minutes of your time and of our time and everybody else's time during this program that we're having tonight, this informational meeting. So what I'm gonna do tonight is actually start off, do something different. Councilor Riordan, you're first. We'll work right around the clock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our alphabetical system apparently has gone by the boards here. Is that what's going on? I think it's a good thing. I always thought that was a bad idea anyway, so. I, we had a very good session with the mayor and his team on, on Saturday, and most of the questions that I had, I asked and were answered at that time. I, I, let me start out by saying, I support this agreement. I support it for a variety of reasons, which I'll get into, but having said that, I think this agreement is widely disparate from what our neighbor to the south is getting, and that's my primary bone of contention with this. As we, and it's been pointed out to me, Chip Tuttle pointed this out to me today, nowhere in the legislation does it say that the host-community agreement, the HCA, as I guess we'll call it from here on out, is all about mitigation. And I would agree with that. In fact, the word mitigation isn't used at all in that, in that piece of legislation. However, the agreements that we've come together use the word mitigation completely throughout, throughout the agreements. And, and mitigation, from my understanding, is addressing some of the known and unknown issues with having a casino. This isn't Disneyland. This is a casino. This is gaming. This is gambling. We'd like to think that most people who come to do this are out there to have a good time, but unfortunately, crime, traffic, you name it, comes along with something like this. And therefore, mitigation is an important issue. It's important to address some of those issues, such as crime, such as traffic, and this agreement to some extent does, does that, but public safety issues and traffic issues need to be addressed, as well as some issues that are just never gonna go away. I mean, there are going to be days when people say, that damn casino. And it's gonna be a traffic issue, or it's gonna be something else. So, we deserve to get something back for that, is, is pretty much what it comes down to. And, and so that's what this is all about. It's about mitigation. And it's, what is mitigating is the effect in the communities in which the facility lies. This facility lies on approximately 168-odd acres, and about 70 percent of it is in Boston and 30 percent of it is in Revere. This is the property. The actual casino itself is gonna be built in Boston, and that certainly is a consideration in mitigation. But let me point something out, out to you. Boston is a community of some 700,000 or whatever number of people. Most significantly, according to the U.S. Census figures, Revere's a community of about 53,000 people, and East Boston is a community of about 40,000 people. Those do not make any mistake about are the two communities that are gonna be most affected by this casino. The pickpocket is gonna ask his victim to go to West Roxbury so that he can pick his pocket. The drug dealer is not gonna make, be making his drug deals in Jamaica Plain. They're gonna be in the local communities, which consist of Revere, 53,000 people, East Boston, 43,000 people, and these are the people that need to get relief from mitigation. Okay, so having said that, Suffolk Downs, and I think honestly Suffolk Downs has gone about as far as they can financially with this thing, from what I see of the figures, and still able, and leaving them still able to make a profit, you know, a good profit, but a profit over there. And it seems reasonable, the total amount that they're offering. What doesn't, what bothers me more is the breakup of the pie. Again, looking at it from the size of the communities that it's going to affect and look at it, looking at what, what Boston is getting out of this, and what we are getting out of this, there is a disparity. Again, I support this agreement, despite that, because of reasons that I'll explain in a moment. But I want the people who are gonna vote on this to know that if they look at that agreement that Boston getting, they're getting quite a bit more. They're getting far more upfront than we are. They're getting approximately $33.4 million in, in four payments. Eight million dollars, they're gonna get 35 days after this agreement is signed. All right? We will get eight million dollars eventually, but we won't get it until 2016, perhaps with a little bit more upfront, if they open the casino a little early. That to me is a disparity. There's employment disparity. City of Boston is guaranteed, 50 percent of the people who work at Suffolk Downs are gonna, are gonna be residents of Boston, and they have a very complicated way to determine who's gonna be a resident of Boston. Believe me, you're not gonna be able to fake it, from what I've seen. And Revere gets 10 percent? Maybe. That's a disparity. The infrastructure, 30, approximately $30 million of the 45-odd million dollars, or 42-odd million dollars that's gonna be spent, is gonna be spent in East Boston. 25 million for the flyover, another 5 million for their streets and sidewalks and things. And we're gonna end up with about $7.5 million for everything that we need to do. East Boston has a traffic issue. The traffic issue is the traffic coming from the south going to the casino, almost exclusively via the tunnels onto Lee Burbank Highway into the casino. They're solving that with the, with the flyover. They're solving that. That problem is almost exclusively at those lights at Boardman Street. And it prevents people by opening that up so that there's no light to stop them from getting to the casino, there's no impetus for them to get off that highway at the two or three different points that they might be able to. We have access to that casino, and I understand the, the projections say about 30 percent are coming from the north or west through Revere, in other words. But we have all the other alleyways to get to that casino we have here, and we're supposed to solve these problems with $7.5 million? No one said anything about widening Route 1, which is, we desperately need. If you look at that Route 1 corridor from Chelsea all the way up to Saugus, you'll see any single day that that is backed up. That's affecting the people in Revere, and that's not being addressed. Hopefully, hopefully the state will come, figure out that they're getting 25 percent of this thing, and they're gonna come forward and do some of these things, but it's not in the agreement. So I want the people at Revere to understand that that's a talent.
Councilor.
One more minute. One more minute. You had made me go first, so I'm gonna say it. All right? The last thing, the last thing that I will address, and there are other things, if there's $50 million to go to the businesses in East, in Boston, specifically East Boston, $7.5 million for businesses in Revere, that is a disparate figure, and I think too disparate when it comes down to this. Now, as I said from the beginning, and I'll continue to say it, I am in favor of this. I am in favor of this primarily because I am afraid of what will happen if we don't do it. If we don't do it, we have another casino on our doorstep in Everett, which is likely to be the next available choice, if this isn't taken. And if that happens, we're gonna get all the bad stuff with none of the mitigation. In addition to that, if Suffolk Downs goes, I'm not giving away any secrets, that racetrack is closing. If it doesn't go, that racetrack is gonna stay open, and that whole oval area inside there will be dedicated strictly to the racing industry. There won't be any malls, there won't be any apartments, there won't be any condominiums. If we get another 10,000 people over there, living in that area, we're in big trouble. And you, you don't have to see how dense this community already is to figure that out.
Councilor, please.
I'm almost done.
Councilor, please.
Finally, I will say this. I, I, again, I support this agreement, but I, I want you to understand, anybody listening out there, that it's not all ice cream and cake. There is gonna be problems down the road we're gonna have to deal with. I hope there's enough money in this mitigation agreement to handle it.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be somewhat brief. Let me say at the outset, I support this agreement. I support it with vigor. I think it's a step in the right direction. I wanna compliment our legislative delegation, our mayor, my colleagues on the city council, and all of the other persons that have been involved in putting this agreement together. My main concern, and I, and I know the mayor shares that concern, is that 1A corridor coming up from Lynn. There are gonna be people using that corridor. I think Chip Tuttle alluded to the fact that there'd be 3% or 4%, and 3% or 4% is, is quite a few, when you figure the number of people that's gonna be coming into that casino. My hope, down the road, the day that casino opens in full, that the mayor will make available the monies to open the Point of Pines Fire Station, that the mayor will make available the monies to put extra public safety in that area down there. Anywhere north from Lynn up to Bell Circle is gonna be heavily impacted, there's no doubt about it. But we're gonna have the money to address those problems. But we're going to have the money to address those problems, and I know Chief Doherty and Chief Cafrelli will work toward that end. You know, I hear a lot of talk about what percentage is in Boston and what percentage is in Revere, and it's very true. Two-thirds of this project are in Boston. But I don't hear anyone mentioning the fact that we have two huge lots on the northern end of the boulevard, we have several lots on the southern end of the boulevard, we have shars, we have a trailer park. Eventually, the stable area will be developed commercially. There's a lot of money out there to be gained for the city of Revere. I'd like to see a city of Revere when all of our public safety facilities are up and running, when we have police officers back down on Broadway, on Shirley Avenue, and Revere Street again, when our recreational facilities are brand spanking new, and people are enjoying them, whether they're young or old. That's what I look forward to in this Revere, and that's why I'm going to support this program 100%. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I could talk on this for four or five hours, but I know you're not going to let me, but it's a long time coming. One thing I would like to say, this process started, and Kathy Reinstein said, Representative Reinstein said, 15 years ago, I mean, people hoping for gambling come to Revere. You know, it took a long time and a lot of punches to get to this point. I mean, the process was set up by the state delegation. I think they did a great job. They had a blueprint of 40 other states that had it. They took all the negatives, went through it, it took them time. We crucified them for the time it took them, but I think they did things right. They basically took a lot of the politics out of it. Right now, we're at the point that it's the citizens, 100%, it's up to them if they want this. The last task that we just reached to get to the citizens was the mayor was put to a task from the legislation. He didn't ask for this. The two mayors of the host communities, which thank God we are a host community. Everton Court right now is saying Boston has a piece of the land that's in their sight, and they may not even be considered a host community. So, there's nothing being built on the Revere side, first phase. Second phase, we hope there is, because it will come to Revere. But that being said, the mayor, and in the last three days of this agreement, you couldn't get a hold of the mayor. He was behind closed doors for 17, 18 hours a day, didn't sign till Boston signed. I don't know if a lot of people know this, he got some stuff in the last hours of this. This wasn't done overnight. It was done hours and hours of his sweat and everything else. But to say this is not a good agreement for the people, the bottom line is dollars. The bottom line is minimum of $180 to $200 million at the end of 15 years, potential of 400 or 500 million, if things really go well. And the economists and the experts say a billion dollars, if not more. I was at a hearing two years ago at the state, just before they passed it, and listened to an economist speak before I testified, and the economist said there's $3 billion of untapped money for gambling, set aside from the lottery. And they went through different things about how many people go to Vegas, they go there three times a year, they might go there once, they might go there once every couple of years. But I mean, they had reasons why there was a potential of untapped gambler money for the state of Massachusetts. Everybody knows Foxwoods and Mahigans gets a lot of their money from Massachusetts. So, you know, are their numbers on one billion a year? If they are, City of Revere is going to do very, very well. Let's say they don't. Let's say they only reach three-quarters of their potential for the fourth or fifth year. We're still getting, I think it's probably $12 million to $15 million a year. That's a lot of money, without them reaching their potential. If they do 200 million and lose money, City of Revere is getting 4 million. Before they open the door, the first year when they get the license, we're getting 4 million. There's a lot of caveats in this thing, but if this reaches any potential at all of the experts, and I'm sure it will, we're going to do very well. Now, I'm not going to nitpick everything in this thing, what's good and what possibly could have been better, versus Boston, versus Revere. I mean, I could say Beachmont, the Ward 1 area, you cannot get through this, no matter where you come from, unless you go through Ward 1. So all the money should go to Beachmont and the Macaulay area, should go to Ward 1. East Boston, Boston. Is that the case? Well, I'm going to try to make that case. And I see stuff in there for Beachmont, but yeah, am I going to look for more? Yeah, it's going to be the most affected area in Revere. But I ain't going to really stand here and say it's not all Revere involved in this. Of course I am. I looked at this agreement, and I'll say one thing about it. I have, everybody knows I've got a big family, my wife, got five brothers that live in the city, two sisters, all own houses, so I'm owning two or three. I got my son's own houses. Now, you think, honestly, I'm all in on this, I'll state that right now. But if I thought this had any big negative effect on their properties or their quality of life, I would not stand here and ask people to vote for this. And I can understand if you're against it, you're against it for whatever reasons, and I respect that. But I do know this agreement inside and out. The average person listening out there may not. But don't listen to the coffee shop gossip that, you know, Revere didn't get their potential. Revere did pretty well, and is going to do very well. Without it, let's put all that aside. Let's put the argument aside, the Revere, here's this package, the extra police, every council up here looking for extra things in their ward, the mayor, I mean, all this stuff that we're looking, you know, in the future for, basically, I think Counselor Reiden said, is gone. The tracks are going to close, the date, let me tell you, if this ever fails, 1,000 jobs are lost, and a lot of those are Revere jobs, I know a lot of those people. Those are lost. All the traffic improvements? We have the traffic now. I think the mayor touched on it, that the improvements only can get better. Only can get better. You know, there's so many things in this agreement, and I'm going to state this right now, anybody who wants to call me, I've got my cell phone here 24/7, 978-648-0091. That's my cell phone, I'm making it on 24 hours a day, and if I have the time, I will answer your questions on this. Because get to know the ins and outs of this whole agreement. It's pages and pages. But if you get to know and you're on the fence, you've got to be for this. Because the alternative could be, just one more minute. The alternative could be astronomical. We don't control 70% of that property. They could put low apartments, that's the chief I would feel about that, fire chief, police chief, with no extra police and no fire. We have the least amount of police office in the history of Revere right now. And I know the mayor's committed, that's his number one priority, is the police. And if this doesn't come, we're not going to get them. So all the negatives, and if somebody used the word mitigation, this is mitigation. Yeah, it's a negative, there's no question there's negatives with this. This isn't, everything roses and everything's great. But you've got to weigh things out. Just put a balance in that, weigh them. I've got a trailer park that, trust me, I like to get rid of. And some people down there are nice people, don't get me wrong. There's a potential of getting rid of that trailer park to see a nice commercial or a high-rise, or whatever's there. A parking lot might even help better. So I'm saying, these are the potentials, the potentials are astronomical. The development that could happen in the spirit that this could, the catalyst to start, is endless, astronomical, we got a hole in the ground in Wonderland Dog Track for how long? It's been there for how long? With this, it's a potential of greatness down there, potential of economic development. People say their taxes, you may see your taxes, trust me, balanced, leveled out and everything else, without this, your taxes are never going to stop going up, because I've never seen them not go up.
Counselor.
So I will hold that, and I'm sure we're going to hold future meetings on this, but there's so much to this that I think the public, and I'm hoping they're listening out there, but if they have any questions, I get my cell phone, it's on the city webpage, give me a call, call any council up, they know all about this, but trust me, you're better off with this than not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Page.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Mr. Fields from Suffolk, and Chip Tuttle and his team for a very generous offer to the city of Revere. I'm not going to compare it to Boston, because first of all, Boston's probably getting what they deserve, because they, most of the casinos, all of the casinos are going to be on Boston. We got the bonds and a parking lot, and 30% of the property. But we got so much area to develop down there in the future. I'm looking into the future, and I'm telling you right now, that at the end, when it's all said and done, we might not be around, but I feel that Revere will be making more money than Boston at the end. And I hope, but first of all, I want to say for the people out, you know, there are people out there against the casino. And, you know, I want to, I respect their opinion. In a perfect world, I wouldn't be for a casino. But I think the upside is so much for Revere right now, the way the economy is, and the city really needs the commercial, the extra money that we'll get from all this. But I want the people that are out there that are saying that, eh, we don't want that casino at Suffolk Downs, just remember one thing, there is going to be a casino, and it'll probably end up closer to where I live, West Revere, than Suffolk Downs. We already have a traffic problem, and Washington has it is. And I can just foresee, if the casino goes to Everett, whatever reason it is that you're against the casino, you know, whether it's a gambling problem, or the traffic, or whatever the problem, the reason may be, if you vote the casino down at Revere, that reason is not going to go away. It's just going to probably get worse for West Revere, and it'll be, the casino will be in Everett, and they'll be getting all this money, that's $200 million over 15 years that Revere will be getting. So, I just want to, when you do go out and vote, just remember, there is going to be a casino. So, if you want to get something for it, you've got to vote for it. And I am 100% in support of this. I want to thank Mayor Rizzo and John Fester and his team for, they did an outstanding job, along with Suffolk. And I'm in with, as far as Representative Reinstein, Kathy, I had a laugh when you said 15 years ago, because I remember working the details when you used to work down Wonderland. And what was it down Wonderland? Every day, everybody's saying, ah, the slots are coming in, the slots are coming, this is the year. And unfortunately, that was like a family down there. It was 80% probably people from Revere working there, and, you know, it was devastating when it closed. And I just don't want to see Suffolk end up like that. And hopefully, when you go out and vote, just remember, you've got to think of the pluses. We're going to get a lot of money here for Revere, and in the future, down the road, our grandchildren, hopefully, will still be here, my grand, I have a couple of sons that own houses in Revere, and I have grandchildren that are going, starting in the school system. I just, I look for the future for them, much better with that casino at Suffolk Downs than in Everett. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, as a former mayor, look at this as a win-win-win situation for our community, without question. Whenever you can project $200 million over the life of the contract, which is basically 15 years, that sets up plans that you can plan for the future, without question. People complain we didn't get as much as Boston, but again, nothing is being built in the city of Revere. The future of Revere will be the expansion of the gaming casino. Instead of a parking lot, we can add maybe a hotel, fine dining, or whatever. With the advent of casinos, it does bring problems to the community, without question. You get drugs, and people come in to prey on the poor people who are coming in the blue line, okay? But I'm sure with the state police, Suffolk security, and our own Revere police department, they can remedy those situations. I disagree with some of the issues pertaining to traffic mitigation. I spoke at the public hearing we had at Suffolk Downs pertaining to the Route 16, Route 1 interconnect there. I think it's going to be a bottleneck. Anyone goes along Route 16 right now knows it's a bottleneck, as you come off Route 1. And to compound the issue, you're going to have a stoplight at the end of it, there'll be a brand-new stoplight there underneath Route 1, coming west on 16, you're going to have another stoplight. So unless they modify those plans, I think that has to be addressed. But the financial aspect of this, I believe everyone did a great job on it. For us to get, as I said, $200 million over 15 years, and to get 4 million in 2014, another 4 million in the following year, that's great. You know, we talk about hiring police officers, fire personnel, doing things that we normally could not afford to spend under the normal budget, because we are at the present rate at a levy limit, you can't expend money you don't have. But what I'd like to see is a earmark, dedicated earmark, for relief to our taxpayers. I think that is imperative. If we're going to get this amount of money in the city, I think we have to allocate some dollars of the mitigation money to reduce our tax base for both commercial, which is one of the highest amounts, and residential. Excuse me, John. But again, I am for the plan. I'd like to see certain items also mitigated a little bit in Revere's favor, but I believe we got the best we could get under proposed plan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanassol.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Kathy Reinstein said it best, and we've been talking about this for several years. God knows who stole, Bob O'Malley, when he was at Suffolk Downs, brought us to several meetings and introducing us to what might possibly happen at that site. And I think of all the proposals ever submitted by any applicant in all the tenure that I've been at the city council, I have never seen one plan that's been so dedicated and direct as this particular proposal. We've been waiting for this for years. And to all the naysayers out there that profess that they don't want a casino, that's a prerogative of theirs. But it's almost a suggestion that it breeds bad people. I know a lot of wonderful, good people who go to casinos, and enjoy the quality of life within the casino, and enjoy the entertainment that it provides, as long as they don't go beyond their means. So good people go to casinos, not just bad people. Bad people are everywhere. And as far as the host agreement, I was a little concerned about the 10% ratio, but then I came down to reality, as I thought it over in a practical manner. We're putting 400 people to work in the city of Revere, it's a wonderful thing. We serve in a capacity that needs and directs that every single time we're out in the streets, someone's asking us or promoting us to put our name on their application for a job, looking for a job opportunity, anywhere they might go. And I've served for many years on this council, and we talked about growth. And we only had two sites that we could possibly grow on in the city of Revere. One was Wonderland Dog Track, and the other was Nott Gate Shopping Center. I would suggest very strongly, as we sit here tonight, we're getting ready for wonderful things to happen at Nott Gate Shopping Center, Market Basket's about to open in the next few days. Wonderland Dog Track is still in the open, but we still have a possibility there. But we're a very, very limited community. We don't have much potential for growth within itself. So this opportunity to serve and be part and partners of what Suffolk Downs, at the site that they exist at, who's been there for 77 years, operating as a gaming institution, you're not bringing a new product into an area. This is an old, old product. And I know some of my colleagues are probably tired of hearing me say this, because they've heard me say it on several occasions. I remember in the days of Suffolk Downs, when on a Saturday afternoon, there were 25,000 people there. And in those particular days, it was only one gimmick betting, and that was a daily double. So everybody used to converge on Suffolk Downs at that particular time to make the daily double. You're not going to get that with casinos. You're not going to get that. You're going to see 30, 40 cars, 30, 40 cars at different intervals. You're not going to get an overabundance of cars. And again, we spoke at the briefing on Saturday, speaking with the mayor, I reminded him of when we were offering up Wonderland Marketplace to be the new stop and site of Stop &amp; Shop site of Stop &amp; Shop and Staples and all of that, we had some activists saying, oh, the traffic impact is gonna be incredible, you won't be able to go by there. Or with the mitigated money that we received from that project, the traffic flow in front of Wonderland Marketplace is unbelievable. It's, it's so, don't be fearful of something new. This is something that's gonna come to our community, and it's gonna be a very, very beneficial factor for us. I, along with many others, including the mayor himself, predicated our elections based on getting public safety up to a high limit, so that our citizens will be protected at all times, whether it be fire, police personnel. And, and we have to make sure we have the funding and mechanism to finance these things, to provide for our community. But Counselor Haas makes a good point. We need some relief for our taxpayers. Absolutely, everybody's in agreement with that. We have an aged community, one of many people who enjoy the quality of life, they've lived X number of years, and now their retirement funds are at a level where they really can't compete with today's market. So we have to be mindful of that. And I, and I think that within the provisions of this administration and any administration in the future, they will take that into consideration. But we will have the money to do that. We will have the financial resources to do this type of thing. Don't look at this as a bad thing. This is a wonderful thing. I give all the credit in the world for Chip Tuttle and his group for coming and telling everybody, and, and selling this to everybody who would listen. They, they, they pleaded a wonderful case. The Johnny Come Lately group from Everett is just jumping on board. In my opinion, this is a, this is a no-brainer. What, if you wanted to pick a site in this Commonwealth, what's best for gaming, it's Suffolk Downs. Suffolk Downs is a perfect gaming place, and it's a perfect place for people to go who want that kind of activity. It's adult activity. You go in with X number of dollars, you don't have credit cards, you don't, you, you spend what you have in your pocket. And so if, if people want to spend their monies like that, let them do it. It's their will to do that. And I just think, Mr. President, that this is a great opportunity for our community. I think that this host community package that we received, and we reversed on Saturday, is a good thing for our city. The money is there. I just hope that the people of Revere come out on whatever day we select to vote, that they come out in numbers and vote in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanassal. Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Well, I've spent the past four days reviewing these 43 pages with a fine-tooth comb, and I can tell you that I've read it, and I've reread it, and I've torn it apart, and I've annotated it, and I've asked myself, and the mayor, and everyone in front of us, every question that I could think of. And I can honestly say that it's a solid agreement. It's written very well, it's well-structured, and a lot of the questions that I've had, if they weren't answered right away, you know, we found the answers to them. We spent several hours the other day going over this, so there, there are a lot of questions. But the bottom line is, this is an issue that started long before my time on the council, but it's something that I have the great opportunity of working with now. Um, it's an issue of pros and cons, you know, and with any issue that arises before us, there are pros and there are cons. You're gonna see good things, and you're gonna see bad things. And it's up to all of us to figure out what are the pros and what are the cons, and how is this benefiting us? And how is this benefiting the great deal of our community? So the benefits you're gonna see are police, are fire, you know, we're gonna have more money, so hopefully we can lower some of the things that are issues to our residents, like, you know, water and sewer fees, and all of these issues that are really hurting us in Revere. So there are a vast amount of opportunities. Am I gonna sit here and tell you that, you know, it's, it's all wonderful? No. You know, you're gonna see issues, just as you would with the mall, you know? You see traffic, you see issues, but they're issues that we have planned for. So there will be solutions to these issues. It's not like we're going to plan something like this and leave a community with problems. That's not the intention, and there are outlets for all of the concerns that we have. There are still gonna be people that, you know, are for it or against it, absolutely. And you see that with every single issue that we look at, and that's something that's inevitable. Um, you know, and you say that this whole thing that we've talked about for our community that's gonna be really great is it's about jobs, and we've seen a tough economy over the past few years. So, you know, 10%, it's, it's not a huge number, but again, these are minimums, we can exceed them. So hopefully, when this does, if it comes, you know, people are going out there and actively seeking these jobs and seeking these resources, because if you want it, the opportunities are there for you. But it's something that, you know, they're not handed to us, we need to work for them, and we need to do it together, because essentially, we're, we're all in this together, you know? Once this actually happens, it doesn't depend on, you know, one counselor, or the mayor, or one person, it's, it's the entire community, and it's something that's gonna come up for the entire community for a vote. And if it doesn't, then you're not gonna see anything happen with it at all. In terms of the other issues that could arise, you know, if we saw something happen in Everett, or if we saw this property developed in another way, I think the last thing that any of us want to see is another form of development there. Like, an apartment or something like that would just be a nightmare. You know, it's the absolute last thing we need in this community. So I do believe that we're running low on options for these big areas in Revere, you know, we have a vast dog track, we have the horse track, and there are areas that if we don't act soon, they're going to be in big trouble. So I do really encourage everyone to take the time and to read over this thoroughly, and to look into it, and to ask questions. Not one person in this community shouldn't have any doubt or questions before they go to vote, and we are all here for you, and we all have answers, or can all find an answer. So I really, really encourage people to not go into this with a perspective, because if you go into it, you know, gung-ho against or for, you need, you need to be backed up, and you need to have your answers to your questions. So I really, really encourage people to not be afraid to talk to us and to ask, because there are so many resources here to help you. And, you know, it's something that I'm still working through myself. So I'm really happy that I have the people that I have here with me, and I encourage everyone to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Coriggio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The first thing is, I want to commend the mayor, his staff, John Fester, the state legislature, Kathy Reinstein, and Petricelli. They worked very, very hard to bring this to fruition right now, and it was a long time coming. And I always believe it's working as a team, whether we're in the fire department, the police department, and, uh, I'm speaking here from the heart. And I read over the mitigation package, and I think it's an excellent package. A lot of hard work went into the package. You're talking $200 million over 15 years coming to the city of Revere. That's a tremendous amount of money. We couldn't, we couldn't raise that, no matter what kind of commercial development we can bring into the city. And it's all about jobs, union jobs, it's about improving city services, uh, new street and sidewalk reconstruction throughout the city, sewer and water upgrades, reopening the Pines Fire Station, and also, hopefully, maybe we can open up the Beechmont Fire Station with another pump and a ladder truck to the city of Revere. I don't want to see this go to Everett, because if it goes to Everett, we all lose. And what you're gonna have on that site there, I mean, I mean, if the economy goes lousy, you're gonna see probably apartment buildings be put down in Suffolk Downs. And what's gonna happen? They bring in more children, more cars, and you're still gonna have traffic. And it's gonna cost the city a lot of money, we're involved with, you know, with schools. And as far as the road reconstruction and the traffic, I think as time goes on, I think Suffolk Downs will work with the city council and the mayor to try to adjust reconstruction of certain roadways. I think they will do that. And Suffolk Downs, over the years, I have to say, has been a good neighbor. I knew Mr. O'Malley originally, who, God rest his soul, who ran the track. And the track has been very, very good to the city of Revere. They donated to a lot of good causes, uh, to the city of Revere, and we asked for their help. So it's a win-win situ- uh, situation for Revere. I wish everyone good luck. Let's keep the dollars, not down in Foxwoods, in Revere, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by saying that, uh, during, throughout this process, I've kept an open mind about a casino coming into our backyard, mainly because of the fact that we were given the opportunity to negotiate this host community agreement. And I think the legislature did a great job in making sure that we were on a level playing field with Boston. And although Boston obviously has a lot more resources to throw at the negotiation of a deal such as this, we were given the opportunity to be on, on a level playing field. Uh, I'm not gonna play Monday morning quarterback. There were some things in this agreement that I may agree with or not agree with. What I will say is that I want people to remember that we're basing all of this on a projection of a billion-dollar casino coming to Revere, and, and he's Boston. Caesars does not have a facility that does $500 million a year. So the reality of the situation may not be as bright as what's being portrayed by a lot of people. Our minimum payments are most likely gonna be the actual payments that we get, and I want people to remember that. I want, and it is a lot of money, I, I'm not, I'm not discounting the, I think the minimums were actually at a good place, so it was one, one of the highlights, I think, of the, of the agreement. What I do think that there needed to be was maybe a little bit more analysis about what is the, what are the actual revenue, revenues gonna be here? I know Spectrum Gaming did a, did a couple of reports, and they had numbers ranging from $500 million to $700 million to, up to a billion. Um, I do think a billion is a little bit far-fetched. Another thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is our impact on Chapter 70 funds. We are going to see a decline in state aid because of, of the casino, if it comes. Milford has recently been able to re, kind of negotiate a, I think, $2.5 million hold harmless fund. They only get $18 million in Chapter 70 money. We get $45 million. So if there is a decrease in state aid, we need to, we need to be prepared for that. And that's why my, my main focus right now has been, we've talked, we've heard a lot about how we're gonna spend this money. And we've heard about cops and a new DPW facility, and demoing the old police station. We need to make sure that there's an ordinance on the books that needs to be enforced, and that is that half of all gaming revenue must be put into the rainy day fund. That is something that I am completely in favor of. I would hope that my colleagues are on, on the same page, some of whom may have been on the council when this was done by the prior administration. Mayor Ambrosino had, had drafted this, and, and thought it was a good idea to, to be able to hold half of any casino revenue in the rainy day fund, because the rainy day fund is, as people may not want to hear, is pretty important. I was a little disappointed with the jobs, the number of jobs, you know, when the marketing for, for this legislation and for the bill had been, you know, it's about jobs, and jobs are the focus, and it seems like the jobs were for Boston and not necessarily Revere. With that said, this is an opportunity that's once in a lifetime. We cannot squander this. We cannot blow this money that's coming in. I've heard about property tax relief, I've heard about renovation of buildings. We need to make sure that we have a plan, that we're ready for this financial windfall. We need to make sure that, this is a 15-year deal, and probably, hopefully, if it does come, maybe a 50-year deal, or 100-year deal. We need to make sure that any administration cannot blow this money, that there is a sense that this money is not part of operating, we're not gonna give raises out, we're not gonna add a bunch of maybe unnecessary personnel. We are gonna use this money in a, in a smart way, and we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that the city is financially stable. Um, I do want to clear up, and I hope everybody actually reads the, all the agreement and, and everything that's been presented. I, I did have a number of questions, and I had a follow-up email that I had sent to the, um, to members of the administration, looking for information. I understand that that information is, was pretty extensive, and may take a little while to, to actually get, but I would hope that any of that information, any of the analysis that we have is, is presented and put out to the public. One final note that I want to make, and I want to clarify a little bit of misinformation that was stated, this, there's not definitely a casino coming. It's up to three. So it's not either Everett or Revere. The Gaming Commission could say, no dice, I don't, we don't want to have one in Region 1. And if that happens, I guess my, this is my other question, is if that happens, are we gonna be held accountable for that? Are we gonna be, uh, left with 900 units of rental apartments if the Gaming Commission, if we pass it and the Gaming Commission says we don't want it? Is there any guarantee that we're gonna be held harmless, and we don't have the negative impacts that are gonna come along with a 900, or 9,000-unit building at Suffolk Downs? So I hope that everybody reads this agreement. Uh, I have taken a lot of time to analyze this, and I do want to commend the folks who worked on it. And, you know, I just hope that everybody actually is an informed voter when they, when they make their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
I thank you very much, Mr. President, and I thank my colleagues, because I heard mostly positive comments, and I am a big proponent of this casino at Suffolk Downs, and it's not because I like to gamble, it's not because of anything except that it's good for the city of Revere. I want to congratulate the mayor, his administration, but I first want to congratulate the state delegation, the Speaker DeLeo, Leader Reinstein, Anthony Petricelli, and not for, not for helping us get a casino in Revere, but for putting together a process that really eliminated the politics from selecting this casino. I believe that Suffolk Downs is gonna win this casino on the merit, because it's a destination casino, the racetrack, I think, makes it the winner. I believe they're gonna award at least one in our region, and I believe it's gonna be Suffolk Downs. But this meeting was supposed to be about informing the people, we have a summary of the agreement, and the summary of the agreement lays out how much money is gonna come guaranteed to the city of Revere, provided Suffolk gets a casino. Doesn't have to make any benchmarks, and I dare say, the experts that are predicting a billion dollars in revenue know what they're talking about, because you can't compare this to Las Vegas that has a casino every two, every two feet next to each other. You can't compare this to Mohegan Sun that's out there in a, in a, in a hole in the ground, a far, this is a destination casino next to an airport, with, next to public transportation. And I want to touch on transportation, too. Some of my colleagues are worried that East Boston's getting most of the money in mitigation and the traffic. I want to tell you about the Boardman Street overpass and how that helps Revere, because what's gonna happen is, Route 1A South is gonna have an extra lane. Now, I don't know how many of you go into Boston at rush hour, but I do, and it's a nightmare. And it's gonna open that roadway up, it's gonna drastically improve Route 1A South. So there's, a lot of the improvements in East Boston are gonna help Revere, and I believe the, the ramp off of 16 West going to Route 1North is gonna make a, a market improvement, defer in traffic off of Bell Circle. I think there's a lot of good stuff in the traffic mitigation. What I will say is, is, God forbid, we didn't get the casino at Suffolk Downs, something's gonna go there, more likely a Walmart and mixed-use, mostly residential, and I dare say, a lot of Section 8. What you won't get is $50 million in traffic mitigation. You'll get all the traffic, and you won't get any of the benefits. Basically, I just want to go over a couple of the numbers. Forgive me for changing glasses. Year 1 is a guaranteed 4.25 million dollars. Year 2's 4 and 3.4 million dollars. Year 3 is 5 million. I'm talking minimums here. That's if they don't meet their benchmarks. Year 4 is 5.5 million dollars, and year 5 is 9 million. That's times 11 years. The minimum, if they don't, if they, let's say they only make 500 million, they're not doing a billion in revenue. We're talking 120 million guaranteed over the 15-year agreement. We're talking 120 million guaranteed over the 15-year agreement. Anybody that wants to sneeze at that, and the other side of this coin is, you could get a casino in Everett, it's going to impact Revere tremendously, especially Ward 6 and especially off of Park Ave, and you'll get no mitigation for it. This team of the mayors has put together a great deal for the city of Revere, and I think that once anybody knows what's actually in this agreement and how good it is for the city of Revere, they have to support it. So I'm looking forward to the vote of the people, the informed people, and I'm a guy that will inform anybody, because I know as much about this agreement as anybody. So if you have any questions out there, please ask me, but this is good for the future of Revere. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Well, we did very well, gentlemen and ladies. What I would like to do is make my comments. I know a lot of the action was, a lot of the questions that were brought up, you know, I had similar things, so I'm not going to totally repeat them, but, you know, in looking at the agreement, you know, I could say that almost every part of this city is being affected by this agreement. Every ward has something being put into it. Revere Street and the American Legion Highway, money being put into that. Ward 5, they're looking at Harris Street intersection, about rebuilding that, which, you know, is going to be hopefully done next year, you know, by the state, and nobody has said anything about state input here. Now, we're just talking about Revere and Caesars and Suffolk. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts is pumping a lot of bucks into this as a part of the package deal. You've got the Route 1 corridor up through Sargus. You know, I know it's been on the table for many years, but we got the T bill passed this past year that provided the money for this. Now, hopefully, it's going to be implemented and even pursued because of Suffolk, even on a faster pace, hopefully. You know, originally, it was supposed to be finished in '14, but unfortunately, the state, you know, had their own problems. The 1A, not only 1A, but the 107 corridor coming into Revere is affected. So there's a lot of action, and there's a lot of locations that are being done. Ward 1, you know, Counsel Penner and I were main workers, you know, directly with the transportation folks in Suffolk to take care of our own wards. He's getting a little more than $1 million for his ward, taking care of Donley Square, streetscaping. You know, my target was the squareway, the Sunoco intersection at North Shore Road and Tommasella Road. That's going to be taken care of. Hopefully, down the road, when we get these hotels down in our area, they're going to clean out the county ditch, you know, which, down along Standish Road and behind the Garfield School. These are things that we all looked into, and we know that it's something that has to be done down the road. This is going to help us. This is going to help us. New streets and sidewalks. I know my area is directly affected, Counsel Penner's area is directly affected. We are butters to these properties. When it comes to the use of the money, gentlemen and lady, this is going to be a cooperative effort between the council and the mayor. This isn't something that the mayor's going to, you know, say, we're using it for this, he has to come to us to talk to us about these monies. The 2%, the traffic that was coming in from the north, I think it was 2% that they mentioned coming down from the north, you know, it doesn't seem like a lot, but compared to the 70% coming in from the south and west, you know, it's really not a lot, but it's still going to impact those roads. There's no question. One thing that wasn't mentioned, I know the mayor has committed to putting on more police with this, which we all know we need for various reasons. We know there's going to have to be a memorandum of understanding between Revere Police, State Police, and Boston Police on who's going to be going into this property, because I know there's going to be plenty of times that our folks are going to be going in there, not only police, but fire. You know, so here's, this is a cooperative effort, not only in Revere and everything here. You're talking about all the surrounding cities that we have. Jobs, are we happy with the 10%? Not 1,000%, but it's something. We're getting a piece of the pie. Is it something that we can look into in the future and try and adjust? I'm sure there's, you know, there's a little open door there that we can work with, with Caesars and Suffolk. Chip's a great guy, and I know he'll open up his arms to us. Right, Chip? Sure. But, you know, with that, you know, I know it's, I like the package. You know, I'm happy with it. I think it's going to be a great thing for Revere. I had a constituent email me the other day and say, is this thing really going to be good for us? My answer was, yes, it is. Are we going to have problems? Like Counsel Janino says, yeah, we're going to have problems, but that's why we're getting the extra police. That's why we're going to get better fire folks. I'm not saying that they're not good now. They're great now. They're better equipment for them. That's needed. And she, you know, when she wrote back, she goes, you know, I'm pleased with your answer. I like what I heard. And I think I convinced this lady, you know, and it's going to make it happen, and hopefully she'll pass the word. But I urge everybody, I urge everybody, I know there's naysayers, when it comes to the vote, get out and vote yes in this question. Please. Counsel Penner.
Just to ask you a question through you, and it's your call. Can we take a vote of confidence to the mayor on this package? I'd appreciate if we could do that.
We can do that. Can we wait till after we get some questions?
No problem.
Okay. What I want to do now is, I want to open up to some questions. I know I gave some guidelines on questions and answers. If anybody has any written questions that they want to get answered by any of the mayor's folks, please present them now. Questions and answers. Bring the question up and give it to the clerk, and we'll read it.
I have heard about the mitigation of public safety, transportation improvements, and so on. No one has mentioned any concern about the mitigation needed in our schools and have, and will they be impacted?
Well, I could just briefly mention, I know Counsel Rego mentioned Chapter 70 money, but I don't know if the mayor wants to address that.
Yeah, so I'm going to defer to Representative Reinstein. We're already working with her office on this, but I will say this, and I think I touched on it earlier about, you know, investing into after-school programs and investing into a new youth center that I think is going to, you know, really transcend the entire school system, so, but in terms of, if we're talking Chapter 70 money specifically, I think I'd rather have Representative Reinstein address that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, you know, weeks ago, the mayor's office forwarded us an email from Dr. Dakin with concerns over this, because he had heard a discussion, maybe in a different community that was also dealing with gaming mitigation. So we have forwarded the information to the Department of Education, and we're looking into it. I would say this, so we've not heard anything back from DOT, that's Department of, I'm sorry, DOE, Department of Education, that says, yes, this will affect your Chapter 70 money. You know, Chapter 70 money is a formula. A big part of that formula is in regards to the demographics of a community. So whether we have this influx of revenue or not, it is not going to change the demographics of our community. We are still close to being a minority-majority area. We still will have most of our kids below the poverty level, and if we can employ enough people and maybe get some of those kids off of, above the poverty level, then haven't we all succeeded from that? So, but those are things that do not change in this formula, regardless of this kind of business and this kind of revenue influx coming into any community, and those are large, large parts of why we get the money that we get, and that is not going to change. So I, you know, I caution, and I know, you know, Counsel Rego had some questions about it, and I think Counsel Riordan had some questions about it, regardless of that, that's a big, big factor in this formula. So, you know, the Wellesleys of the world and other communities that have much higher, not only property values, which hopefully our property values will go up, which I think people will be happy about, but there's just a different level of income and a different demographic of people that is not going to change in our city. If anything, you know, we know what we're seeing and what the numbers in talking, you know, when we just did the census, it looks as if, when we look to do the census in 10 years, we will have a minority-majority neighborhood, just like we've seen East Boston go and Everett go and Chelsea go. So I think that that's what we're looking in our future for Revere. I just want to briefly say, too, I want to thank all of you, and I really want to thank, you know, Mayor Rizzo and John Fester and his team for really working nonstop on this. I think this is a huge, this is a huge thing for the city, and this is going to be transformative in so many positive ways. I've spent my whole legislative career working on this, and I want to thank all of you for your kudos. It's much appreciated, but, you know, the speaker, when he came in, said, we are going to do this because we are in a, we are in a jobs crisis. We are in a blue-collar recession, is what he said when he became the Speaker of the House. And this is why this puts so many things in, not only that we put it back in the hands of you, which is how it should have been, and that through you, we're putting it back in the hands of our residents, which is how it should have been, and that's, that legislation should have been written the way it was. And, you know, giving other ways to apply for impact mitigation, like you said, Mr. President, you know, dealing with Department of Transportation and all these other things, to get things that have been on list for a long time that we know need to get done, that will affect in a positive way the whole North Shore corridor, but we'll never have the money to do. It's not a panacea. There's nothing that is a panacea, but we will see things happen that we will never have the opportunity to see happen if this comes in. And I think this is going to be a big, positive thing. I've put my career and my reputation on the line, all over the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on this. The speaker sent me out many police escorts, many a night, to my car in different communities across the Commonwealth, convincing 158 other people, the speaker and I were always convinced on our side, but to help 158 other people be convinced that this was a good thing for the Commonwealth, and you're going to see good things happen with higher education and industry jobs, and I'm always available for any information if any of you need to contact us. I know we're in touch with a lot of you all the time. We work consistently with the mayor's office, and as soon as I get that information from Department of Education, I will forward it to all of you if that's what you're looking for, and if there's anything else we can do, I'm happy to do that. So thank you.
Cool, thank you. I just want to acknowledge, Ms. Mayor, before you continue, our city treasurer and collective, Judge Anzoni, was not mentioned before, and I do want to acknowledge him there. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I was just informed while Representative Reinstein was speaking that that question, in addition to Chapter 70, was actually addressing overcrowding in the schools as a result of this project. And as many of you have said during your explanations or your opinions of what this host community agreement means and what the, what a resort-style casino would mean to the city, I think, I think in response to the question, what is it going to mean as far as overcrowding, I think, you know, it mitigates, it eliminates the possibility, certainly for that site, to participate in any overcrowding of our school. I think everybody here mentioned the possibility, what if not a resort-style casino, what goes there? Is it another 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 units? That's what's going to pump kids into the school system and further burden us. The other thing that I just want to mention, too, and it doesn't directly relate to Chapter 70 money, but if you look at the state of Pennsylvania last year, where they had $3.1 billion worth of gross gaming revenues, you know, if you use that number in the state of Massachusetts at a 25% tax rate, you know, you're coming up with a pretty healthy number that's going to go into the state coffers, much of which, and I don't mean to speak for the legislature, but I think much of which is going to come back in the form of local aid. So that, in and of itself, is going to help communities, you know, I mean, whatever offset potentially you could have with Chapter 70. I mean, listen, the reason the city of Revere doesn't go above and beyond net school spending is because we don't have the money to do that. I mean, of course, we would love to be able, I mean, you know, inasmuch as we have a terrific school system. Second, in the urban school district behind Cambridge and MCAS scores, and Cambridge spends over two times per student what we spend. We do a terrific job with the resources we have, but, listen, it's unlimited, as far as I'm concerned, as to how good you want to see your kids and your grandchildren do. But as far as the question goes, it's going to be, in my opinion, it's going to eliminate the possibility of overcrowding in our schools.
Cool, thank you. I think we have another question.
This question is from Cheryl Wittridge, 1021 Winthrop Ave. How is the city on the rise? Is it at the expense towards citizens and all, including the municipalities and community who have worked together for continuing to struggle with public safety issues?
Mr. Mayor, someone want to take that question? I'll repeat it again. Sorry.
How is this a city on the rise? Is it at the expense towards citizens and all, including the municipalities and community who have worked together for continuing to struggle with public safety issues?
I don't know. Is there a question here or just a statement?
What is it? A question.
Okay. How does it affect public safety?
In the area of public safety.
Area of public safety, Chief, you want to take a shot at it?
I would say in the area of public safety. You know, I am a citizen of the community, and I can say that the public safety aspects I'm excited for. We're going to have opportunities to spend money towards our public safety that we would never be able to do. And with this package that comes with it and the monies that will be available to the city, like on the fire end of it, it's our hope to develop a technical rescue team. The city could never do it. We couldn't get the equipment, we couldn't have the training, we wouldn't have the additional personnel. So this technical rescue would be able to respond to anything in the city, from high-angle rescues by rope, confined space, trench rescue. There's a ton of things that we're going to be able to do. Chief Cafarelli can answer to the police under the public safety, but I'm very excited. I, I, I'm a resident. Okay. Residents are going to benefit by additional public safety.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you let him finish the question? You know, he's trying to understand what's going on. Let him answer it.
The traffic situation, the improvements that are going to, that are planned for the traffic, even right down to, we talked with Suffolk one of the earliest meetings, preemptive traffic signals. And what they are, all the, we have them on the fire apparatus now. It's an emitter that, when you get to a traffic signal, it turns green if the public safety vehicle has that emitter. So it allows the traffic to flow, that doesn't hold up the fire apparatus and get stuck in traffic. We're going to get them for all the police vehicles. I had attempted a number of times with DOT to get these for other sites, and we couldn't, and now with the Suffolk Downs thing, Suffolk Downs package, they've consented to provide these for just about all our intersections where there are traffic signals. So the emergency apparatus, fire or police, ambulance could get right through the, any traffic. And I guess that'll be it. Chief Cafarelli can just answer that.
Chief Cafarelli, you want to expand on this, please?
Counselor, thank you. We anticipate a significant increase, probably up to 20% in my staffing levels alone, not to mention equipment and so forth. What's that going to mean? Is that going to be a 20% increase in offices solely based in Suffolk Downs? Absolutely not. It's 20% increase citywide. That's going to enable me to expand existing units and open units that I don't have presently, one of which is going to be a seat on the gaming unit that's going to be formed as a result of the casino opening. We'll have a seat which will be reimbursed to my payroll through Suffolk Downs. That's very significant, not to mention a memorandum of understanding with the state police and with the city of Boston. We presently work with both agencies very well, which we've seen in the past with some of our storm meetings, and we work very well with our other, our other agencies within the city. So we stand to gain significantly in the public safety realm.
Thank you, Chief. Another question.
This question is from Juan Jaramillo. Aside from the youth center, has there been an outreach to our schools to discuss hands-on training, development, education, and internship opportunities for our youth through our schools? If so, can someone elaborate on any plan or... If so, can someone elaborate on any plan or program that Caesars and Suffolk can offer?
Mr. Mayor.
So I'll do my best to answer the question. There is community college money available on the state side exclusive of the agreement with Suffolk Downs. That's already there in the legislation. As far as jobs goes and employment opportunities, there will be a full-time employee that will be paid for and employed by Suffolk Downs that will be only working with our communities, host communities, to make sure that residents get the training and get the job opportunities that should be available to them. So that is one of the greatest things, you know, about this project. And while I can appreciate and understand some of the counselors, maybe their concern or dissatisfaction with the percentage number, I don't mean to speak for Chip or for Richard, but I would think that if we hit that 10% number and somebody came in afterwards that met the qualifications of a position that might be open, I don't think they would be reluctant to hire that person. I think pretty much that, you know, it would be in their best interest. They want these communities to be successful. I mean, I can't see why they'd want to build a billion-dollar facility and not want to see both communities succeed. And one of the ways that you build a community and help a community succeed is by putting people to work. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they're on board with that, and I think we're going to see that happen as all of this evolves.
That seems to be it. Counselor Penta, you want to repeat your motion?
Just a vote of confidence on the mitigation package as the mayor signed the agreement, a vote of confidence for him for all the hard work he has put forward. Roll call on it.
Shall the city, shall the Revere City Council approve a vote of confidence to Mayor Rizzo regarding the host community agreement by and between the city of Revere and Sterling Suffolk Racecourse LLC? Counselor Rego?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Penta?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes? And Counsel President Novoselis?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is ordered.
There is one piece of communication we have to read.
Communication from William J. Moreau, Chair of the Board Suffolk Downs, requesting a host community election pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 23K, Section 15, Subsection 13.
What we're going to do is, we haven't decided on the date yet, so what we're going to do is put it on the table. It's going to be in the committee at the hall, and as soon as we hear a date, we're going to call for probably an emergency meeting because we need 45 days from the time we've set the date to the date of the election. So we have to see what that is for now. So we'll put that on the table for now. Hearing no other business, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time, your cooperation. Meeting is adjourned.